All right, we're going to have a public hearing on the budget. I don't think there's going to be much public comment, so this is more for people in the audience, both online, virtually, and in person, plus for the council up here. We had a budget workshop a couple of weeks ago where we went through the budget line by line, but I think part of the public hearing, I've got a couple of pages of notes here, and hopefully I don't go much longer than 10 minutes about what's in the budget and maybe a little bit of why. Basically, start with the goals of the town, and it's to retain our small-town charm by keeping Hampstead safe, affordable, and a great place to raise a family and live. And every decision that we make up here is based on the best long-term interest of our town. We're not thinking four or five years out, we're trying to think 20 years out, and that's helped us get things done like Main Street as an example. The other part of it is we want our budget to be physically sustainable and resilient. We want to minimize the impacts from the state and the county government cuts when they come, when there's the inevitable downturn such as occurred last year, which, as it turns out, wasn't that bad. So currently, we're emerging from the effects of the COVID lockdown, and it fared well. Last year at this time, I said we were in a period of uncertainty, the likes of which no one had seen before. Economists could not predict one month out, yet alone one year. We hopefully are in the start of a long recovery, but there are a couple of troubling signs within the recovery. Inflation being one, it's impacting everything we buy, and the businesses that are having a difficult time finding good people to fill open positions. So, you know, I heard, we've seen gas prices go up, we've seen the price of everything that we buy as far as supplies for the water system or the police department, from paper to you name it. It's a lot higher than advertised, I guess, in the normal inflation terms. Our priorities as we go through the budget, we look at safety, the police department. Today, they're trained to today's standards, and they're able to deal with today's issues. We currently have eight sworn officers, one who's in training, who'll be out in the street come September. Hopefully, he starts being better to us come next March. And then we have one dispatcher as well. We have one open position, so we're one person below our full complement. Our water system, we need safe and in compliance with ever-increasing regulations. Our public work staff has eight people, all of them are certified Level III water operators with one exception. When I first started coming here, we were trying to get everybody to Level II operators, so they've come along. Property tax rate. Manchester, by comparison, is at 21.6, so they're right there with us. Sykesville's at 33, Tonty Town's at 37, and Westminster at 56. So I think you're getting some bang for your buck in Hampstead. As far as property taxes go, I'll say this more than once, it's a seller's market. Everybody out there knows it. There's so few houses on the market, when a house does hit the market, it's on the market for three days, maybe, and then they're getting at least ask or well above ask, and that's going to be beneficial to our assessed value and beneficial to the property taxes that we collect. Business personal property taxes, we budgeted that at $62,000. That we decreased last year, but it came through pretty well. We are not increasing it this year. We'll wait and see how the businesses do and whether they continue to recover. Excuse me, the rate is still at 55 cents. Manchester, by comparison, is at 46, Sykesville at 87.5, Tonty Town 80, and Westminster $1.10. Amusement tax, $42,000 in the budget this year. You can see how, you know, the property tax and what I'll get to in a minute, local share of income taxes are the two biggest numbers, but you can see how quickly they fall off as far as the amounts go. But amusement tax is up 42, $242,000 from $30,000. We cut 20 out of last year's budget because we figured there wouldn't be many amusements going on, then low and behold, you know, our amusement tax is pretty much oak-minded green, and so you were locked out of going inside, so everybody and their brother played golf last year, so that was not impacted, which was a good thing. So hopefully, you know, people continue to get out there now if they're hooked and continue to play golf this year. The local share of income taxes, which is our second biggest income piece, is a 6.1% increase from last year's budget and 1.5% in excess of what we project to receive this year. We backed it off a little bit last year because we figured income tax collections would be down a little bit with the COVID implications. That, in fact, did not happen. And the income taxes, that's nothing that you pay extra. That's that little box that says Hampstead on your Maryland tax return, and you check that, and so it's not an extra tax, but it makes sure that some of what you give to the state gets spent locally here in our town. Other revenue, you've got the highway user revenue, which is the Transportation Trust Fund, so when you fill up at the pump, a certain amount of those taxes are supposed to come back to pave local roads. During the O'Malley years, which are now pretty much in the rearview mirror, but he rated that to the tune of 90%, so our income went from $250,000 to $25,000 a year on that line item. So we really couldn't pave many roads, which is one of the reasons we have a paving bond. But Larry Hogan, to his credit, with the General Assembly passed, three years ago, they established a funding mechanism so that we're set from 2020 to 2024. In fiscal year 2021, we're supposed to get $254,000, but this is the fiscal year that's just closing up on June 30th, because we're a fiscal year from July 1st to June 30th. But that was reduced to 214 because of COVID, so we're waiting to see how that plays out. You know, nobody was traveling, nobody was buying gas. We're hoping that that number goes back up, and we have budgeted $238,000, which comes in a letter from the state saying this is the amount you'll get. Program Open Space, which I'm sure Dave will get into later, that's sort of, it's a one-time thing, happens every other year, but we budgeted $324,000 for that. We've never had such a big number for it, but there was a special project that I won't steal as thunder that we got approved for, so that's a big, big increase. Carroll County Overlapping Services is $380,000, 3% increase over last year. That's basically so you live in the town of Hampstead, you don't pay for the same services twice between the town and the county. Cable/TV franchise fees, the budget's increasing from 50 to 65,000. We were seeing decreases with cord cutting going on, and this was one of the impacts of COVID. Everybody was home watching TV and/or on their computer, so our revenues went up in that category. We'll be interested to see future revenues if cord-cutting resumes now that people are out and about again. Overall revenues, budget this coming year in '22 to the budget that we were just completing here in '21, we have a 14% increase, 3.7 million from 3.3 million. And most of the reason was we backed off on a lot of revenue last year, and then we were, came out better than we thought we would. So all that was, all that was good. Basically, though, when you back out the big grants that we're getting, the program Open Space grant funding, which doesn't happen every year, and in the case of the War Memorial is a one-time event, it's, the increase year over year is 6.9%. On the expense side, we have 23 employees and one open position, so a total of 24, which represents no change from year to year. Employees are going to get a 2% to 4% general increase, which is in line with other towns in the county. However, due to increases in funding from the sheriff's office and to keep current with the employment market and the general state of the economy, we consider increases above those amounts to retain key personnel. We're always evaluating our employees and the contribution they make and reward them accordingly. Other than employees, our biggest expense is trash and waste removal, which is the weekly trash pickup, the weekly yard waste pickup, the four times, three times a year community yard sale slash bulk trash pickup, and I'm missing one somewhere in there, but that's $388,000, it's a 4.1% increase. We did a five-year contract with Hughes, we're in year four of that contract, which gives some certainty, but after next year, we'll be rebidding. One of the things that's been new that I've highlighted in prior discussions about budget notes is stormwater management, MPDES, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, and the Watershed Implementation Plan, the WIP. So alphabetical jargon for all, but their EPA and state unfunded mandated costs, which if you go back to the early 2010s, those costs ran from $26,000 to $42,000 a year. Well, you know, they're stepped up your regulation, and you've got to do more with your stormwater runoff, and so those costs now are consistently over $120,000, $130,000 a year, so more than doubled, almost triple. And like I said, you know, unfunded mandates, we had to make it up. When you get into our water system, there's going to be no increase in our water rates. I think we're on par with other Carroll County times. This is the third year where we had no increase, after we've had several years of increases where they ran about 8% because the water system was behind and owed the general fund money, and that's coming more in line. That number's down to about a quarter million, it was over a million at some point. Appropriation permit that we have for the water system, it's now expired, we're working with MDE to get a new permit. Apparently, because of their work-from-home protocols, they've been a little slow to respond, but we, Kevin, cross our fingers, we don't anticipate any issues there, and we fully anticipate that we'll be at, continue to have 630,000 gallons a day in permitted use. We're at about, I think Ben will tell you, we're at about 350 a day, so there's plenty of wiggle room there. We're in good shape as far as the water system goes and the use of the water system. We've done a great job with water leaks being detected, which, you know, fixing them, the new mains, the new mains that we're currently working on, they've increased capacity, they've eliminated waste, and the new pipe basically paid immediate dividends. Water operating chemicals, we have a new supplier that was saving us between 15% and 20%. I think those costs, though, are starting to bounce back up because of general inflation. And we have a solar array out there on the north end of town, and it's not paying as many dividends as we want right now because we got a little disagreement between Tesla and BG&E about a blown transformer, but we'll get that back online. On the debt side, we have four bonds that are currently out there. We have a paving bond, which I mentioned before when we weren't getting any money for the roads, which we let for $500,000 in 2013, so we're in year nine of '15 for that paving bond. It'll run out in six years, and that'll come in handy because we're going to need to start paving for Main Street because we're going to own Main Street. Streetlights, that was $651,000, we're in year three of '15 there. The streetlights have obviously paid an immediate dividend, and, you know, that was a lot of discussion with the Main Street Revitalization Plan. The North Side Water Tower, so we'd had four bonds, now we have three. So I've been around long enough now, as well as Wayne, that we had a bond for $723,000 to do the new water tower at the north end, back then new, and 2001 for $723,000, it paid off this past year. So that one, that one is going by the wayside. And then the water line, we took out the bond for $2.9 million, which is the largest bond we've ever had, but, you know, so is that project to replace the water main on Main Street, so that was done in '15. We're in year six of '20, but that's a 50-year amortization because that's a 75-year use as far as, as far as a project goes, as far as a water line. So I guess my grandchildren's children will be dealing with that when that comes to. I would say our forecast this time last year, I think I told you, uncertain at best. Now it's uncertain to a positive outlook. As I mentioned, residential sales are occurring quickly, prices are going through the roof, like it or not. That's somewhat a part of, you know, the kids that are the millennial generation now coming online as home buyers, and there's no product out for them to buy because there's so few houses being developed. And speaking of new houses being developed, we have, you know, six lots at Melanie Acres that we've been working with for some time. We had 17-acre infill, 17 lot infill at the north end of Main Street at North Side Estates, that's now sold out. Westwood Condos continues to add 12 units here and there, which will increase our tax base slightly. Hampstead Overlook is about 18 months to two years out from adding to our tax base. I would hope they're moving dirt by next spring. On the commercial side, Ringe Engineering's adding 80,000 square feet, which will start in the coming fiscal year. Dollar General's going to start in a couple of weeks. North Carroll is online to be sold. Expenses are a challenge when we went through all this, but they're analyzed carefully, and so far, we've done well. Overall, you know, our town is just a reflection of the overall economy. I think I've said it more than once, when your revenue's based on property and income taxes, when the economy's in a recession, so is our town. But right now, it's, you know, it's looking up, it's looking better than it did this time last year. So the budget is balanced, I think it's reasonable. You know, everybody up here talked about it for quite some period of time, a couple weeks ago. The other piece of our budget's the capital improvement plan. There's some uncertainty related to that, but that apparently got cleared up a little bit today. We have that American Rescue Plan. If you remember back in March, the Senate and the House of Representatives on the federal level passed that American Rescue Plan, and they said every single municipality in the country's going to share in so much money. We're still trying to figure out, initially, they said it was going to be $5 million, it's more looking, a little bit less, but it's still a significant amount of money, three and change. And we had planned on bonding what we're doing out there with our water lines, replacing the last of the 1936 laterals on all the side roads and fixing the mess that we have on Lower Beckleyville Road. We were planning to bond that for $1,040,000, but it looks like we can use that American Rescue Plan money, so then we wouldn't have to bond that. So that's a positive for the town. Those system improvements are about $1 million. As far as the capital plan, the biggest, some of the biggest unknowns out there are what's going to happen to road repairs, money coming from the state, we're only fixed through 2024. After that, what means to be seen whether the state's going to be in a giving mood? I guess it depends on whether they're, you know, what their budget looks like. The municipalities will obviously be fighting for every penny they can get, but that would necessitate another bond, but we'd have the bond rolling off at about that point. There's new vehicles for the police each year, there's pretty much new vehicles for public works each year, the same things that we do every other year. We try to have a reserve, when you look at it, you take our general fund and our water fund, which is about $4.7 million, we try to have a reserve that matches 25% of that, and we're currently at 25.9%, so that's the overall plan. So I went on for 17 minutes, I apologize, but I guess it needs to be done because it's your money we're spending. Any questions up here or out there?
Nope.
See, head shaking no, and nobody was looking at the ceiling. Step up. All right. Thanks for your attention to that, needed to be done. So we'll put the public hearing in the books, and we'll start with our council meeting, and I'll call that to order. Please rise for the prayer and for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Lord, we submit ourselves to you as your servants and the servants of the people of Hampstead who place their trust in us. Please allow every word that is spoken and every action taken to be in the best interest of Hampstead, and for everyone gathered here to be a stabilizing influence in these unsettled times. Oh Lord, bless this meeting and our town. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tammy, the role, please.
Mayor Nevin.
Here.
Councilman Thomas.
Here.
Councilman Unglesby.
Here.
Councilwoman Painter.
Here.
Councilwoman Barrett.
Here.
And Councilman Zollman.
Here. There we go. Everybody's president accounted for. Minute approvals from the council meeting on May 12th. Motion?
No motion.
We'll let Diane make the motion, Dave second it, and you just, Deb, sorry. Stop it. Throw me off. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Hopefully, I get people's names right tonight. All right. Town managers report and Main Street revitalization update. Maybe we're going to drop that second part off here soon.
We hope so. We did a semifinal inspection, which occurred on Thursday, May 27th, for the Main Street Revitalization Project. So representatives from State Highway, CG Miller, and the town, including our inspector, walked the entire length of the project. So Kevin Hand, Kristy Collins, and I represented the town. There was only a few minor items that needed to be addressed, so a punch list of these items was finalized the same day. CG Miller's currently working on one of these items in front of 1301 North Main Street. They are correcting a drainage issue at the northern corner of Hillcrest Avenue. A crew has removed a section of curb and gutter from the corner of Hillcrest Avenue North to the storm drain inlet. The new stormwater management system, I'm sure everybody's noticed, that was installed as part of the project, has greatly improved the drainage issues in that area, but there's still improvement needed. BG&E replaced a section of sidewalk to south of 42 by the southbound lane because BG&E anchored their utility pole into the middle of our new sidewalk, and this anchor had to be removed because it prevented the sidewalk from being ADA compliant. To raise the Verizon lines away from our new lampposts in the middle of town, Verizon needs to install four taller utility poles. Verizon has removed a small section of sidewalk around the four poles that will be replaced. These poles are located on the southbound lane, north and south of Gil Avenue. The removal and replacement of these poles have not been scheduled yet. We are working with State Highway on a maintenance agreement for the traffic signals located at the Northwoods Trail and Gil Avenue intersections. When the project's completed and the road is transferred to the town, we'll own these signals, and of course, we'll own all the lampposts. Additionally, town staff's exploring insurance coverage for the lamppost. Any incidents where a lamppost is dropped and damaged by a vehicle will be covered by the driver's auto insurance, but there are other scenarios that would occur where the town may need to replace or repair or replace a lamppost at our own cost. The mayor mentioned our water main replacement project. Mid-Atlantic continues to work on the replacement of the remainder of the 1936 water mains. The installation of the new lines, service connections, and asphalt patching along Shiloh Avenue, Upper Beckleyville Road, and Hillcrest Streets completed. They have installed the new water main under Reinderman Avenue, which has been charged and pressure-tested. A water quality test will be performed tomorrow. After crews complete the tie-in into the system and replace the service connections, they will move to West Street, where the water main is being replaced from Reinderman Avenue to Tonty Alley. When this work's completed, they will move to Ralph Avenue. They intend to begin the water main replacement work on Lower Beckleyville Road in August. And again, as the mayor mentioned, our commercial and residential projects are still moving forward. We continue to have meetings with county staff and developers involving our various projects, including the North Carroll High School property. PennTex Ventures has received final site plan approval for the construction of a Dollar General on 832 South Main Street. Prior to construction, the current building will need to be demolished. The county has approved the demolition permit, but PennTex was waiting for BG&E to disconnect the electric from the building. The electric is scheduled to be disconnected on June 11th. BG&E crews have disconnected the gas to prepare for the demolition, and they have applied a temporary asphalt patch in the shoulder of the northbound lane because, of course, the main for the gas is on the other side of the road. Once completed, the Dollar General, once the building's completed, Dollar General will be reconnecting to the gas lines, so BG&E will, once they reconnect them, they'll apply a permanent asphalt patch. They plan to finish clearing the site within a month, the developer does. With our finance department, the FY22 budget was introduced at the May council meeting and will be presented at tonight's meeting for approval, and we held a public budget workshop on the evening of May 25th. Cheryl will soon begin the closeout of FY21. The last payroll processing through ADP, which is our new system, ran well. However, there's still some issues with the general ledger distribution of the deferred comp amounts to the various departments. ADP is actively working to resolve this issue. In the meantime, Cheryl's processing the entries manually. At the Hampstead Merchants Association, HMA, May Board Meeting, it was discussed that while businesses were allowed to open at full capacity, they're still being limited by the inability to find employees to staff their businesses. Jim Rourke and I attended the HMA meeting at Ricky's Bistro, where the main topic was now hiring. During a roundtable, many businesses commented that they were looking for numerous employees to fill positions and offering generous salaries, but no one was applying. In response, HMA started a now-hiring page on their website, listing businesses that are looking to hire, along with the positions needed and how to apply. The page can be found at www.hampsteadmerchants.net/nowhiring. The town, who's partnering with HMA to promote Hampstead businesses, passed out flyers of the listings at our booth on Hampstead Day. After updating the listings, the town purchased a full-page ad in the June 10th edition of the Northern News, and we have also posted a flyer on our Facebook page, which has gotten thousands of, not likes, what's that called, looks?
Views.
Views, thank you. I couldn't think of the word. People have looked at it. So talking about Hampstead Day, I think Hampstead Day's return to Main Street was a big success despite the weather. The street was full of people. It was just, it was great to see. According to the Lions Club, the vendors that participated had a profitable day. Thanks to Dave Keable and the Lions Club for all the hard work and for allowing town staff to be part of the planning committee. Thank you to the mayor and Jim Rourke and all the council who helped manage the town table, and a special thanks to the police and public works staff who worked the event that day, starting at 6:00 AM, and for many that were part of the planning meetings also. It was truly a team effort. On May 24th, the Board of Zoning Appeals heard testimony and received evidence concerning Case A-229, a request by Horizon Consulting Services LLC for an expansion of a non-conforming use at 1108 South Main Street, which is the Manor of Time property. Susan Stitcher, the owner of the Manor of Time, explained that the expansion of the non-conforming use and the addition of a garage in the rear of the property would allow her business to house and sell larger pieces of merchandise. The size of the proposed garage would be less than the 35% of the existing building devoted to the non-conforming use, as required by the town code, and would have the proper setbacks for the property. The board granted the request for an expansion of a non-conforming use. And just to remind everybody, a bulk trash pickup is scheduled for Saturday, July 18th, for residents living within the town limits of Hampstead.
Otherwise known as the community yard sale.
Oh, people have fun. The mayor mentioned the North Side Estates development. All the lots have been sold, and 16 of the 17 houses are occupied. Jay Myers is repairing curb gutter and inlets to prepare for the paving of Chanel Court. The road will be transferred to the town once it passes final inspection. I've also been working closely with the county and state highway to address stormwater runoff from Route 30 and this development, which is negatively affecting two neighboring properties. As mentioned last month, our administrative assistant, CMR, is moving out of state, and she will be greatly missed. The town posted for the open position, and the deadline to apply was Friday, June 4th. We have received 21 applications, so once all the middles have been reviewed, we'll begin the interviewing process.
Apparently, we're a decent employer to work for. All right, I'm going to go out of order. So, you know, one item of new business tonight, and Nick Palmorino's with us tonight, so, and we wanted to recognize him. He's suffered some health challenges, and he's, you know, I've known Nick well for a number of years. Everybody here in town knows Nick really well, but I'll call him up to the front because I think he deserves some recognition.
From the center, but normally I'd say raise your hand, but we're not doing that. So here's a proclamation for the town of Hampstead, where Dominic Nick Palmorino has been performing contractual services for the town of Hampstead since early 2001, and whereas Nick Palmorino, for over 20 years, has served as an integral arm of the Hampstead Public Works Department, and whereas during his tenure, contractual services vary from maintenance, stormwater maintenance, snowplow operating, and leaf and tree removal, and whereas Nick Palmorino's commitment to his profession and the citizens of the town of Hampstead made a positive impact on our day-to-day lives, and whereas Nick Palmorino endlessly demonstrated a devotion to his hometown. Now, therefore, I, Christopher Nevin, mayor of the town of Hampstead, wish our friend Nick all the best in his future endeavors, and hereby proclaim June 8, 2021, Nick Palmorino Day, the town of Hampstead.
For all that work, 20 years, and he, you know, we got eight guys in the public works department, maybe back then it was six.
Yeah, it was last.
It was last, and so he was an integral part of everything we did. So we're going to give you a Town of Hampstead Appreciation Award presented to Nick Palmorino in recognition and appreciation of your service and dedication to the town of Hampstead. So basically, there you go.
Yeah, we got to get up.
And we got it. Let's go. Diane, I'll let you lead us off.
Hey, Hampstead Farmer's Market. Opening day can be summed up in one word, fantastic. Season 12 began on Saturday, June 5th, on the grounds of Panther Sports Academy, which will forever be known as North Carroll High School, near the water tower. The weather was perfect, and it was great to see everyone smiling. Keith Johnson, who successfully navigated the market through the pandemic last year, is continuing as market manager this year. Matt Layerway of Chesapeake Real Estate Group, the company that is purchasing NCHS, had the honor of cutting the ribbon, and Hickory Wynn provided the music. Since customers were entering the market in many different spots from the parking lot, and I think our clicker stopped working at one point, the parking lot was quite full throughout the morning, so it was difficult to count the number of people that arrived. We're estimating that there were upwards of 2,000 customers that came out to shop and enjoy the morning.
Easily.
Easily, yeah. We had 30 vendors, seven of whom are brand-new this year. Just to mention a few, Goose Ridge Soaps is filling the void left by Carol Love Soaps when Larry and Caroline Foreman moved away. Birchview Vineyard in Manchester produces a variety of red and white wines, and there's all-you-need at Chick's Creek, and that's K-N-E-A-D. They sell a variety of baked goods, farm products, and crafts. A complete list of our vendors can be found on the market's website. A complete list of our vendors can be found on the market's website. One change I'd like to mention is that pets are no longer permitted. This new rule goes along with the move to the new location. As much as we have enjoyed seeing all the dogs that have come out over the years, please leave them at home going forward. I heard many positive comments about the ease of parking, the layout of the market, and the nice variety of vendors. The advisory team, who I had the opportunity to meet everyone last night, is planning to add some more seating. I think it's just great to see the festive pre-pandemic atmosphere return to the farmers' market, and we're all looking forward to a successful and enjoyable season. And that's all I have.
Yeah, it was a great, I was there, family was there, the ribbon cutting was great, and it was, it was great to see everybody out. I wish it was like that the week before for Hampstead Day, but so, but 2,000 people's nothing, you know, that's great. It was a great turnout. Wayne?
Hampstead Train Station, Music in the Park starts this coming Saturday from 6:00 to 8:00, no charge, free parking, no admission, come on down.
Ben?
We got Hickory Wynn playing from 6:00 to 8:00 at the War Memorial, right in the center of town. And then in July, second week in July, we have Bootleg playing, same time, 6:00 to 8:00. Tree Commission, we're still doing our planning for the fall, and I just found out from Dave, I've got some more property in his neighborhood I can plant trees in, so we plan to do that this fall.
Okay, good. Deb?
Planning and Zoning Commission met on Wednesday, May 26th. They approved one sign for a new business, The Chef Experience, at 1005 South Main, which is attached, the sign is attached to the wooden property sign on the corner of Main and Lower Beckleyville Road. A new sidewalk was also approved for Town Pride Interiors at 1214 North Main. They'll be adding a thin concrete overlay with a primary color matching their building with the darker border. And as Tammy had mentioned, Manor of Time at 1108 South Main will be adding a detached garage, which is facing their parking lot behind the main house location. So, the commission approved a parking waiver for them, because with the addition, 19 spaces are required, however, they will only have 16 spots available. And BB&amp;T Truist, located at 999 South Main, will be replacing their existing signs with new ones sometime in the spring of 2022. When the signs are replaced, they will cover them to be unveiled nationally. The commission has decided not to approve it this time, but to get additional information from them, such as what the covering will look like and the timeframe on how long the coverings will be on. A draft for the Chapter 5 of the 2020 Hampstead Comprehensive Plan Update was received and reviewed, and we'll come back with changes during the June Planning and Zoning Meeting. And the commission was given the introduction of the County Annual Report and Town Manual.
I had Chef Experience for lunch today, it was good. Jim brought it back, and it's like, it was J&amp;P worthy, it was like, three pounds.
Dave?
Couple things. We talked about the Dean's being torn down. I've been working with the property owners at the Dean's Restaurant that own it now. We've saved some historic items from demolition. A couple of the items we're actually going to be using up at the gardens, they had some wood beams in there, and they had some old barn facade wood that I'm going to use up there, so thank you for that donation. Talking about the park, our biggest thing going on right now is the renovation of the War Memorial Park. Two weeks ago, I met with Public Works and Christie Collins, and a company that's going to be working on building the pavilion for us, and we looked over quite a few things. Basically, we took measurements of the new stage, the theater, and where it's going to be built. We looked at some new sidewalks, very productive meeting. I think this is, this is going to be a big, big thing for downtown. And about four years ago, an idea came, came to me for this, and Wayne Thomas, Councilman Thomas, and we went to Christie, and we talked to the mayor, and we worked some things out, and we were able to finally get the grant that we needed. Took four years of tries, but we have it, so now we're funded to go. We had a, we had the booth this year at the Hampstead Day, and we had a nice plat there of what it's going to look like, and it was, the look on people's faces was incredible. You know what I'm saying? Where's this going? It was right behind me, so they could see what's there now and what we're going to have, so I'll have updates for that as we have them. Basically, that's it for me. I just wanted to plug one thing for, thing that's going on in town. Saturday, January 19th, from 4:00 to 7:00, it's going to be Matthews Tire Car Show this year.
It'll be June 19.
June 19, excuse me, June 19. I believe it's our 11th year. So, look forward to seeing everybody out there, so.
Always a good turnout.
Yes.
I would say it's more than a renovation, it's a complete redo.
Redo of the park, right, complete redo.
All right, Ben, your Oral Order Report.
Water for May was around 342,000 gallons per day. So far this month, it's up about 9,000 gallons more per day, so we're at 351,000. Rainfall for May was at 5.04 inches, and so far in June, it's at 1.36 inches. And again, as the mayor said, our permits, appropriation permits have not been received yet, as of, as of yet, and we submitted them in March, so.
I've been in contact with them, they said everything's, they're just not working from empty, yet they're all still working from home.
Hey, do we have a mic for the chief?
Oh.
Uh-oh. Well, just standing here in front of.
I can do that.
I'll speak loudly, there's no.
No, I know.
Your, your voice does not carry, sorry. The only police officer I know whose voice does not carry.
We know you like the microphone.
All right, I believe I'm on now. Good evening, everybody. During the month of May, with reference to traffic safety, we investigated 11 traffic accidents, six were reportable, five were minor property damage only, and two of the crashes took place at the 42 Circle. One of them included the fertilizer truck, which was covered, I believe, in the newspaper, if I'm not mistaken. Speed signs, we placed at 10 locations for a total of 67 days of display. In traffic enforcement, we conducted 74 selective enforcements over a period of 26 hours. Seven citations, 41 warnings were issued. In general traffic enforcement, that included 107 citations and 181 warnings. We conducted 812 property checks of businesses and schools. In the serious crime category, we investigated one simple assault of the second degree, one theft of a bicycle, and we assisted Baltimore County in a pursuit that came into the center of town with a truck that was stolen out of Baltimore. We took into custody one adult for a traffic violation, four DUI arrests, one adult for a warrant service, and one adult for a violation of a protective order. In the training department, we conducted 99 and a half hours of training. Topics included some of our annual firearm qualifications and Excel intermediate class due process rights for cops in 2021, new detective training, and evidence collection and control and storage course, as well as a Glock armor school. That essentially gives certain officers the ability to repair any kind of damage or issues or stunt things that come up with our firearms. Community events, we obviously participated in Hampstead Day. I would echo some of Tammy's comments. A lot of people put a lot of hard work into that, and I think it all worked out in the, in the end. We participated in the Carroll County Community College Democracy Lab, the Collaborative Community Forum on Policing in the Community. We also participated in the Carroll County Department of Opioid Prevention Wellness and Recovery, I'm sorry, Wellness and Recovery Strategy Meeting. We participated in the Lions Club Memorial Day Flag Raising Ceremony. Once again, we had now what is becoming the annual Manchester Valley procession for the seniors. It was a lot of fun, just a side note. And we also, Lieutenant Gagler attended the Hampstead Merchants Association meeting. And that's everything.
Questions for Chief Snyder? Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
My report, it's, you know, May into June's mayoral busy season, there's just a lot going on. I'll echo what Tammy and the chief said about Hampstead Day, our thanks to the Police Department, Public Works, folks up here who were there, especially for the Lions Club, Dave Keppel, for the work they did to make that day such a success. I mean, 50 degrees and crappy weather, but it was amazing the number of people who were there, and I, you know, we got a 70-degree day. I think it was a good dry run for what we're going to, it'll be four times as busy as the farmers' market. So, it was, you know, it was still a great day, and people were just happy to be out walking along Main Street with the road shut down. And like Tammy said, a lot of planning went into that, and the teamwork was exceptional, and Dave Keppel was a great leader in getting that done, and I can't tell you how many people were so happy to have Hampstead Day back on Main Street. The opening of the farmers' market, another great day, you know, sunny and 70, couldn't have asked for better weather when it started. And Keith Johnson does a great job organizing that. Wayne, you guys did a great job moving that over to the North Carroll High School site, or the Panther. I've had several meetings along with Tammy, with county staff, talking about new developments that are coming in town, including the change of what's going on at North Carroll. Things seem to be moving ahead positively. Don't believe any rumors you hear otherwise, because they're not true. We had a really nice meeting with the Carroll County Maryland Municipal League, so all eight towns were there, lots of new council members, and three new mayors, two of which were there. We had all five commissioners in attendance, first time we've been out since March of last year. And it was just a good time to, you know, for everybody to be there, and there was a lot of intermingling. So, that was really positive, and we'll get together again at the end of this month in Ocean City for the MML Summer Conference down there. Met with Jim Dewis last night, he and I usually get together once a quarter, talk about our common interests and things that are going on, police-related and otherwise. And then last thing, I've got two scholarship awards that I want to talk about, and I went to the Manchester Valley Assembly, and these two gentlemen each won a $1,000 scholarship from the town of Hampstead. The two winners are Gabriel Soboski, so, yes?
Gabriel.
Soboski. See, I was so concerned about that last name that I didn't focus on the first name when we, when we were live, but, and then Jacob McGregor. So, it's interesting, I think, Gabriel, you're first in your class, want to weight it, and Jacob, you're fourth. And both guys are going to go to University of Maryland College Park, so, you know, and they're both going to be mechanical engineers, so it's not like they've been fooling around for four years. I'll give you a credit, you were a lot more dedicated at your age than I was at mine. Jacob, you're, you're an Eagle Scout? So, you were probably here somewhere along the line when you were a pup, when you had to stand up and, you know, introduce yourself. And you wrote a great essay, clearly read my, read my last newsletter, so well done on your part, well played, because I talked about misrepresentation of contamination of wells, and that just happened to be his, his essay, so, you know, that was pretty easy to pick out. But it was, you know, nevertheless, a great, well-organized, well-written essay, and I can see why you're fourth in your class. Gabriel, you know, you're number one Presidential Scholar, and you've also already graduated from Carroll Community College, so you're going to be done in two years at College Park, or you're, you're going to get a PhD in mechanical?
Mechanical engineering.
Okay. All right, you know, a ton of, a ton of service hours and also an Eagle Scout, so, you know, pretty, we've had a lot of quality people step up and win these awards, but this is the first time we've had two Eagle Scouts, two mechanical engineering guys, and two guys in the top five of their class. So, I gave these to you before, but we'll, we'll take a little picture and, you know, if you wouldn't mind coming up.
But basically, this scholarship certificate, we're especially proud of Hampstead Town Citizens, who lead by example, and set standards for other young people to follow these two gentlemen. Setting high goals and standards for themselves, they did that as well, and achieving them is a true inspiration for others. We look forward to what you guys do in the future. So, Jacob, that's yours. Gabriel, this is yours. Slide in a little bit.
We, we got, you know, between these scholarship offers, and it's amazing the number of people who don't really apply, you know, we're looking to give money away. And then we do the same thing for the Carroll County Maryland Municipal League, and the quality of the people who won this year was just outstanding, and says a lot about the character of the kids and their families and moms and dads. So, well done. All right, we've already done Nick, so then we just have the business of the ordinances and resolutions, where I, you know, talked for 17 minutes about the budget. So, first thing is the adoption of Ordinance 539, which is an ordinance to adopt the annual budget of the town of Hampstead for the period of July 1, 2021, to June 30, 2022.
Move to adopt. Second.
Any further discussion of the budget?
Chris?
Yes? Oh, thanks, Wayne. So, I think what you have, so we have to move to amend the budget in its entirety, because we had a person resign from the Police Department, so we tweaked the salaries, and we moved some money into cameras to harden our water infrastructure and, and general infrastructure of the town as far as security goes. So, we're going to spend 10 grand for security, five between general and five, and the other five in the water fund. So.
You ready?
Yep.
I make a motion to amend Ordinance 539 to include the revised budget, as noted at the budget workshop.
Thank you. Second by Dave. So, all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And then all those in favor of adoption 539 as amended?
Roll call.
Since it's a budget, we'll roll call. You, you ready for this?
I'm ready.
The names are right there at the top. Just picking one or...
Says the one who called me. I know, I know. That's okay.
I've been on a roll this month.
All right, you ready? Councilwoman Barrett?
Yes.
And Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Painter?
Yes.
Councilman Unglesby?
Yes.
And Councilman Zolman?
Yes.
All right. Then in order to have the budget, we have to have the adoption of Ordinance 540, which is an ordinance to levy the taxes for the fiscal year 2022, so we have the revenue to spend the money that's already been approved in the budget.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, and then adoption of Resolution 2021-02, which is a resolution maintaining the water rates at the same level, and we should look to change our code in the future. Would you like to make that motion, since you were in charge of the...
Motion to adopt.
Second.
And any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Last piece of business is ordinance, the introduction of Ordinance 541, which is uses and conditions of the, in the historic district. We're changing the uses in the historic district, I guess, to make them easier to use, the properties more widely marketable, and we have a property that's in mind, the high school, which would fit into it nicely. So, I'll take a motion to introduce Ordinance 541.
Motion to adjourn, Deas?
Second.
Second by Ben. Any discussion?
I've already found a couple of things in there I think we'll have to take a look at, but I'll, I've only written ones today.
I'm sure that, I knew you would.
And I just wanted to let the new council members know, if you have a question, you're more than welcome to call. You can send an email, you can call us, you just can't have a private conversation amongst everyone else. You're welcome to ask questions if you have any.
Yep, feel free. So, motion, all those in favor of introduction of Ordinance 541?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And as Tammy said, call with questions, and Wayne, any comments you have, feel free to let us know. We'll schedule the public hearing for, well, it goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we'll schedule the public hearing for next month.
It's sometime in June.
Okay. Public comments? Anybody? A few people here tonight, it's good to see, first time that we've had this many. Nick, you brought them out. So, and, and the guys did too. So, good to see folks out again, glad you're here. I hope everybody has a very safe and enjoyable summer. Motion to adjourn.
One more round of applause for Nick.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And good night, thank you very much.